Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Spokane City Council's Studies Session. We are going to spend most of the time talking with some community groups who are providing services to homeless people in Spokane for most of the meeting. But before that, we have a brief interview with Chelsea Lowe, who has been nominated by the mayor to be on the CHHS Board. And Chelsea, I'm thinking you might be the person phoning in. If you are, if you could hit...
She doesn't...
Oh, no, you don't need to hit star three. If you could just introduce yourself and tell us... Well, first do that. Is that you, Chelsea?
Yes, that's me. Sorry, the Web Apps application did not work on my phone, so I had to join by phone call.
Yeah.
But yes, my name... Can you hear me?
Yeah, and so, great. Thanks for making it work. And we would just love to hear a little bit about you and why you're interested in serving on the CHHS Board.
Yeah, of course. So, as you stated, my name's Chelsea Lowe. I'm the Homeless Outreach Coordinator at the Spokane Regional Health District. And I have been working in homeless services now for over three years. I was also a case manager and program coordinator for Catholic Charities in the Permanent Court of Housing Havens. So I have extensive experience with helping individuals with accessibility and housing retention, along with other resources to help with their stability. And now I am, you know, serving in a public health role still with the homeless population, just providing public health measures to the community. So my interest for this board position is to also just become more educated and informed when it comes to community services and affordable housing measures in the community, and to just be... continue to be an advocate in different areas when it comes to, you know, community improvement, housing accessibility, and affordability, just for overall community wellness. So that is a short synopsis of my work and my interests, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I will see what questions people have here, if any. Councilmember Wilkerson has a question.
Thank you for applying. So I would just solicit your idea on how the Health Department and CHHS could intersect, or is there true intersection going on now?
So as of right now, I think there is a lot of opportunities, you know, for partnership in many different realms in our community. As far as right now, we do work, you know, closely with the city and the CHHS Department with different, you know, public health initiatives and measures. But I definitely think there could be more of an intersection there, just in regards to when it comes to extending general community services and housing affordability. This board position has been cleared with the Health District to make sure that there is no conflict of interest present. And it actually has been written into my job description as a part of my job roles to be a board member. So the intention, you know, with me applying as well is to just foster some of those partnerships and connections and lines of connection, and just see where we can continue to build and partner as well.
Thank you.
I have a que... This is Council President. I have a question for you. What brought you to Spokane? Or did you grow up here? Or just tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah. So I moved around a lot as a child, but I usually say I'm from Spokane. I lived here from ages 10 to 18. And I pursued my higher education in Phoenix, Arizona, and miss Spokane so much, so I returned back a little over three years ago. And that's when I stepped into the homeless services field in Spokane.
Nice. All right. Well, since you left here at age 18, we have to ask you, where'd you go to high school? Because you'll be judged by that.
Yeah, I went to Lakeside High School in Nine Mile Falls.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. Good for you. All right. Well, Chelsea, again, thanks so much for applying and the service you perform at the Health District. And we are, I think, voting on this on the 15th. So, and you don't have to come for that. It'll be just a very quick vote. And then you will have your hands full of work. And so we're excited for your service, and we'll let you know once you're officially on the board. Thanks so much.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time today.
Okay, great. All right. So now, let's turn to the main event. We have several folks here, and probably each of you could take a whole study session. And so we're asking for really just tell us the most important things you can in the next 10 minutes. We had some questions for you. You can spend your time how you want, but our questions that we asked you to answer was, what do you want City Council to know about your current operations? What are your current statistics for moving people out of homelessness into permanent housing, if you have them? What are the gaps that could be filled to increase the number of people served and/or the effectiveness of the services your organization provides? And what suggestions do you have for cities' participation in the overall system? And my advice to you is just hit the high points. You don't have to explain everything. We know a lot more about your work than you would imagine, just because this has been the issue of the day for as long as I've been on council, six and a half years. So just get right to it and tell us, you know, you've got our full attention. Let us know. So we're going to start with...
Real quick, if you did send me a PowerPoint, just, you know, give me... Make some eye contact with me when you come up, and I'll bring it up on the screen and share it and everything so that you guys don't need to worry about that.
And please do talk into the mic, because we've got people online, both Facebook Live and on TV5. And also, it'll be recorded on the Spokane City Council Vimeo channel. So first up is Fawn from VOA, and after that's going to be some folks from the YWCA, and Jennifer, DeNitra, and Chandler, and then after that, Emma from Family Promise. So we'll start with that. And Fawn does have some slides, so we'll get that.
I'm not tall enough to reach that, nor do you want me on my tiptoes.
Yeah.
So thank you all for doing this session. It's very nice to be able just to chat with all of you and share some of our challenges. I did send you... We have so many programs. I would spend 30 minutes going through outcomes, so that is in the email that was sent to you. So if you have specific questions related to, I'm happy to go through those. What I would really like to talk about is some system improvement recommendations. I think you all are aware, the amount of services and the acuity level of the individuals we serve is very high across the spectrum of all of us as providers. And the funding to do the operations to meet those needs, even if we leverage Medicaid, HUD, and every other source around, we still need more support at the local level. So really, system improvements are to increase funding to meet operational needs of all providers, maximize the number of housing units annually, really coming to this work with a volume mentality, because we are behind the eight ball as a community around affordable housing, and how might we get the most units and leverage different funding sources. Fully funding emergency shelter services. As we know, when we add a new shelter, we fully fund it, but we have archaic shelters that are dying on the vine, that really do good work, and you need them into the system, and we're needing some support. And accessible mental health and SUD treatment services. Oh, next, we're on slide... Sorry. I should be...
Actually, if you can use the arrows on the keyboard, that will work a little bit better.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I should have...
No problem. Here we are. The next area of improvement is the need to have increased funding to meet operational needs. This is a representation of VOA. I'm not alone. All the providers in the room have their own story of shortfall, so I don't want to isolate it to just a VOA problem. But we have a $1.2 million shortfall in our HUD grants alone to provide permanent-supported housing and keep those 240 people in housing with mental health and substance use. And without those things, they will fail out of housing. So it's really critical that we really look at what is important, and if housing and support services is it, we need to fund those operations. Another suggested... We have... And part of the reason on all of our shortfall is we have had an 80% increase in maintenance and repairs to units. When people leave units, it just takes more to do that. We have had an 80% increase in technology. A lot of the demands of our funders are to input and data, and we have to meet requirements. So those are all unfunded mandates. And so we have had to invest in technology. We've had a 52% increase in our liability insurance alone that, again, is... Doesn't see increases from our... Any of our contracts, but it's risky to do this work, which we're happy to do. We've also had a 23% increase from private landlords that we rent housing from in our scattered site units, which is a very successful model, but expensive, and a 9% just in wages and benefits so that we can keep staff help in their own housing and raising healthy families. Our next recommendation is to coordinate capital funding to increase affordable housing. I know we've shared with you the SLIX recommendation for the Affordable Housing Pipeline that's ready to shovel-ready in 18 to 24 months 1,000 units for every sector of population. So I would really encourage the council and the mayor's office to work with a volume mentality for affordable housing, work with low-income housing developers to leverage those and get us those gap funding so we can build more units, and adopt a community conversation to build partnerships and opportunities for step-up housing and homeownership when people graduate and move out. Like, how might we move folks through our system so that they can build wealth and become more independent? Next is fully funding emergency shelter services. We know that people need a safe place to be. Hope House, this is not news to you. We expanded our capacity from 32 units to 80 participants in 2020. We are still struggling every single six months to get funding to keep that shelter open. Hope House's annual contract without COVID funds is $39,000 from the city. That is the investment. So the city of Spokane has invested $703,000 of COVID money.
Fawn, I just wondered, so when that... The new building was built and opened, I mean, did you guys have a funding plan at that time? Did it go awry because of COVID? I'm just kind of curious. What derailed what you were planning to do?
So there's much as happened, right? Because of the way that the funding comes through the city, they couldn't... They were in the middle of their five-year plan, and that was an outcomes-based strategy. The five-year was outcomes-based, and they were sure that when different programs didn't meet outcomes, funding would be pulled and then allocated to programs that were. So that was the strategy from the city to be able to fund the gap for that shelter. And they were also going to increase the sheltered money that they were putting into the system to be able to fill that gap. Because it's on an annual basis, they couldn't preempt the money because that is... Because you guys do one-year contracts.
And was there a vote of the council to do, though, or was that just an administrative thing?
That was a city administrative.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yes. Yes. Great question.
Just to cut to that, I think there were city administrators that said the funding was there...
Correct.
But never talked to the council about it, and the council never knew about it. And so there's been this disconnect for the last few years. Fawn keeps saying, "We were promised." And we're like, "We didn't promise it." So anyway, that's water under the bridge, but that's how we got here, is...
Yeah.
And those people are no longer work for the city, so you can't even...
It makes no difference.
You can't even call them down here and say, "What were you thinking?"
We're just here today. This is where we are at today. And so I just want to bring to attention that Hope House, again, on July 1 of 2023, will no longer have funds to operate that shelter. So we are just at risk. And I also want to identify that there's many shelters that are doing this work that are really struggling to just try to keep the doors open. Lastly, is mental health and SUD treatment more accessible, mental health and SUD for those experiencing homelessness and risk of? The folks that we are serving...
Could you spell out SUD?
Oh, Substance Use Disorder Treatment. Thank you. Thank you. Acronyms in the world of what we do. The acuity level of the individuals we're seeing is... We've never seen it as high as it is now. With untreated mental health, with substance use disorder, and the ability for them to access treatment when they're ready in the community is almost nonexistent. We've hired our own mental health and our own substance use treatment individuals on our team to be able to bring to them some of those services, but treatment in itself is not available, just support. So people are limited to no access. They're oftentimes not being able to get it in the community. And behaviors related to these untreated disorders can lead to really unsafe housing. When we have somebody with untreated substance use and also mental health, they can be a risk to themselves or other residents in the building, creating really unsafe housing environments. So helping us think through how we might be able to support that. VOA has transferred our model from a case-management-only model, where we just walk beside somebody, to being a recovery-focused care model, where we have a team of individuals that wrap around a group of folks. So we now have not only... In order to create really strong and healthy humans, we now have a mental health, substance use, a nurse, housing case manager, and a peer support team that really addresses the needs. We know that works, but it's also a costly model. What our investment in that is, is that if we can provide that level of care, people get healthy faster and move out into the community. In order to do that, they have to have affordable housing stock to move to. So we need to really see this cycle move through. Betsy, do you have a question?
Yes, I'm going to ask a question. I leaned in. So I'm going to hear more about the challenges of the emergency shelter funding. So my question for not only you, but the others who'll come up and talk about that, if there is no funding gap, what will VOA's pivot be for sustainability, Fawn?
Right now, the board is actually considering, if there's no funding, we may have to close the shelter, and we will turn it into transitional housing or some other sort of a model that we need in the community that we can fund in another way.
So those bets will just go away, pretty much?
It could potentially.
Okay. Thank you.
It's at risk. Yeah, that is correct. Here's just a very brief overview of all of our programs. As you guys know, we run Hope House Crosswalk, and also now the Young Adult Shelter. In addition, we have a group home, Alexandria's House, for pregnant and parenting teens, and apartments in partnership with EDI and Transitions to house those young moms. We also have community-based housing, permanent-supported housing for 240 individuals, foster youth housing, veterans housing, and transitional housing for 18 to 24-year-olds.
Councilmember Stratton first, and then Kath Kurt. We're getting closer to the end of our time, but love the questions.
So you talked about contracting out with landlords to get rental spaces for people, correct? And those rents have gone up?
23%.
23%.
In the last year.
Wow. Okay, so it's not just individual renters that we hear from. Now we're seeing it in the nonprofit world. Okay.
Yeah. We rent nearly 200 units from private landlords in the community between all of our housing portfolio.
And they've gone up 23%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks. So, Fawn?
Councilmember Kath Kurt was first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I... Well, two things. One, just to piggyback on that, I guess one thing that caught my eye was you mentioned the 80% increase in the cost of maintenance, and I know that's impacting private landlords big time. And that's part of why those rents are skyrocketing, is all of their increased costs as well.
Correct.
Kind of what I'm wondering, and I would ask the same question of everybody, is there a way to boil this down a bit to identifying kind of the average cost of exiting an individual from homelessness through your program, and then also get a sense of the day-to-day costs, of average cost per person that you're dealing with?
Yeah, it makes more sense to do it by program, and I'm certainly willing to pull that, because dependent on the level of care and the program, it's different. So let me do that by a per-program basis, and I'm certainly willing to get that to you.
That'd be great. And for others, too, if you were able to kind of boil your finances down to that, I think it'd be really good for us to get a sense of, you know, what is that cost to exit somebody from homelessness, and the average time that it might take as well.
Certainly. Easy.
All right. Councilmember Kinnear?
So you mentioned private landlords. So you're placing folks with... They're not going to subsidize housing, correct?
So we have some of our properties we own, and then we master lease with our private landlords. So we lease it as VOA from the private landlord, and then we sublet it to our tenant, who is either a young person or in permanent-supported housing.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get my head around this. So those same landlords are the ones... They would also be increasing the cost of rent for everybody in that complex?
Correct. Yes. Yes, we pay market rent.
Okay. Thank you. That's...
And then, we're out of time, but Councilmember Ringo, go ahead.
Just quickly, you said that you have a $1.2 million shortfall in HUD funding to fund your projects. With the changes that we made in the zoning ordinance, the year-long program, how quickly do you see that spurring development to create more permanent affordable housing to where you won't have this shortfall anymore?
Those are operating shortfalls. So that's just the service shortfall, not necessarily renting the units. So I don't see... As much as I love the zoning changes, and thank you for doing that, that is going to be a gift to be able to build more housing, that won't change our operating shortfall.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, it's going to be Fawn. And also, I should have said that some people have sent us emails. Feel free, all of you, send us any emails that you want afterwards to give us more. We're super happy. Glad that you're here. Next is Jennifer Haynes-Harter, DeNitra Pope, and Chandler Dean, and then Emma Hughes, and after that, Jonathan Malhin.
Hello. Thank you for having us. I'm Jen Haynes-Harter. I'm the Director of Housing with the YWCA. And I have our Shelter Manager, DeNitra Pope, here, and Chandler Dean, who is the Manager of our Outreach Housing Services. So as most of you probably know, we focus on intimate partner domestic violence services. We run our 24-hour domestic violence crisis line through our domestic violence shelter here. Those numbers ebb and flow. COVID's been interesting. They've really peaked, but they've kind of stabilized again for us. Looks like we had about 4,300 crisis line calls to that line in the last 12 months. Our city shelter has 11 bedrooms, and we have a scattered-site valley program that is between two and four two-bedroom apartments that we master lease in the county to serve some of our more non-traditional families, male survivors, households that have dependent elderly parents, that kind of thing out there. It's a more independent program. But we also spend about $4,000 a month on hotel overflow. Those are individuals who, when we are full, which is most of the time, we can't identify a safe location for them. And so we end up placing them in our network of hotel stays. That budget runs pretty high. That includes all the support services to help those folks in hotels, advocacy time, food, transportation. So while we're spending about $54,000 on hotels, there's the additional cost of all those support services tied into that. Survivors do not access our shelter via coordinated entry. They access us through kind of our community network that we have through our 24-hour helpline. Referrals come from law enforcement, community partners, medical providers, our partnerships with our local nonprofits, and then our self-referrals from survivors directly. The reasoning for that is that we have to be able to house people 24/7. When I have law enforcement downtown at 2:00 in the morning with a woman, they need a safe place for her to go. They can call, so we can quickly move and get her safe. So that's the purpose of that. We also have a team of four mobile housing advocates who, until recently, they were providing homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, and relocation. As of July of this year, we have run out of our flexible housing funds. We have had those for six years. They have been satisfactory to meet the need, but due to some federal budget cuts, we have lost those dollars, and I don't have more dollars on the horizon.
And those are federal dollars?
Those are federal dollars, not state. Under VAWA, there's dollars that come through for the Violence Against Women's Act that we're eligible to apply for, and that has been supporting those programs for a long time. Those are flexible dollars with creative solutions for survivors, so we can do a lot of interesting things. To put that in your perspective, last year with those funds, that was 149 households with their 172 dependents. So we've been pulling that number out of the coordinated entry system for services for six years. So that's going to be a big impact on our community for domestic violence. And that system doesn't go through coordinated entry, so I'm sure they will see the numbers tick up under DB because of that. So currently, our mobile housing team is assisting survivors that are just referred to us through coordinated entry. We have two COC rapid rehousing grants to facilitate that. Right now, we have 77 households enrolled with their 125 dependents. So quite a drop in people being served with our mobile team. Our safe shelter, for statistics for exiting, I didn't pull our COC... I mean, our CMIS outcomes. I pulled our internal, because I include transitional housing outcomes as a positive housing outcome, which doesn't get accepted through that system. So we have 46% of survivors exit the shelter to positive housing intervention. 26% of those are singles. 54% of those are families, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Because in a rapid rehousing, also including transitional housing outcomes, 70% of our families are exiting to permanent housing, and 27% of our singles are exiting to permanent housing. So you can see there's a percentage disparity happening with our singles. They are very hard for us to house. So our assumptions for that gap that we have come up with, fair market rate, one-bedroom apartments and studios, you know, they don't exist right now. We call them our unicorns. So that's the biggest problem. You know, our survivors have additional safety concerns about where they can live, location, secure building, security system. There's a lot of factors around where those survivors can safely stay in town if their abuser is local. Let's see. Transitional housing options are limited, especially for singles. You know, we have some really great partnerships with our local transitional housing providers. We have been transitional housing providers in the past, but there's just not enough. And we know that that is one of the best interventions for our high-barrier survivors, especially our singles, because finding a unit as a single income, as a single person, is very difficult right now. A lot of... I'd say the majority of our survivors that we assess don't qualify for permanent-supported housing. That's across the board. That is geared to high here... Those high-barrier chronic homeless individuals, and so we're not getting that referral for our folks. And a lot of our survivors are not scoring high enough to qualify for coordinated entry, which goes back to our loss of our flexible funds.
I'm sorry. Could you explain why your survivors are lower priority than what you called high-barrier homeless individuals?
Well, we're looking at a lot of different things, and I'm... Well, we're looking at a lot of different things, and I'm not a coordinated entry assessor. But, you know, they do an assessment, ask the questions, and it spits out a number. Um, we have, we have survivors that do score in that 60 and will get that housing intervention, but we have a lot that are scoring in that 40 to 30, and they don't get prioritized because our 60s get prioritized.
What, what are the key factors?
Whether they're dealing with substance use disorder, if they have a mental health disorder, if they have had that chronic homeless piece, there's a lot about, there's questions about being, I think, I think there's a question in there about being a sex worker. It's just, our survivors who have high safety concerns, they don't always have all those barriers, and so they score lower, which was fine until July, because we had the funds to help those survivors access permanent housing, and we don't have that anymore.
Wow. That's crazy. Okay.
Anybody else can answer? So, who established those questions for the reentry, and how frequently are they reevaluated? So as times change, not?
Anybody wanna?
It's a formalized tool called the SPADA, and we adopted that probably six years ago as a community, and it has not been assessed or since then.
Who oversees it?
Yeah. So I'm just gonna restate it, just so the people who can, so it's a formalized tool called the SPADA that the COC adopted several, six years ago, and it's...
Org code.
Say that again?
Through org code, there was a product of org code that it was the Service Prioritization Determination Assistance Tools, but that is, was developed, and we obtained it through the org code that, that we don't, it's not anymore.
I'm not getting that, that, you're something code? I'm not quite under...
Org code.
Org code. So it's through the org code. What does Org stand for?
I guess that's like a vendor.
Okay. It's a vendor who developed that tool, but the COC adopted it.
Yeah, it's a tool that's been used in a lot of communities. It's not unique to us. And I, you know, I think there's been other tools out there, but I, I always, it's not my realm of understanding, so...
So I just, I guess the, my, my question or comment, I guess, is, in, sort of, an unelected body, the COC has made this decision as to who is gonna get housed and at what priority. I mean, do we have any say in this, or do we have to, like, exit ourselves from the COC to have a say?
It's, it's a challenge, right? Because it's a prioritization on who in our community needs those dollars the most. I can't, I can't, I mean, I can speak for my population. I know that they're not getting served because they're not having those high, high barriers. But at the same time, um, those are households that need to be stabilized, um, and that are, you know, the other piece is, that's a lot of families, and we're talking ACEs scores of kids that are experiencing homelessness and trauma. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big question.
Well, it's a big, and it is a big issue. I would just suggest we bring it, we get someone from COC here to talk about it.
Well, and to be fair, I am on the COC board.
Okay. But we'll, we'll get someone who will give the official COC position.
But it's, it's a big question, right? Because that's a, it's a whole system that has been, and as somebody who's been a part of the system before we had coordinated entry and after, you can see the positives of that, too. I think for a lot of our community members, it's been great. We have a centralized process. DV is kind of a one-off that doesn't always slide into those systems. But again, it was, we went for other funding because we knew that this was a problem, but now it's gonna be a bigger problem because we don't have that other funding.
And then, could that funding come back? I know that every once in a while, they just cut you off, and then they restore it.
It could. It could, yeah. We lost our OCVA dollars from DSHS. That money went away. Um, we got a Commerce Grant to supplement it for, it's, that grant actually technically goes to the end of the year, but we're already spent out on it. Um, and so, yeah, it could happen. Today, I don't have anything in the coffers for it. So we're looking.
Right.
Because we know that we can't rely on one system to serve everybody.
But this, my understanding is, you've kind of gone, I'm not saying that it's not urgent, but you've gone through this before, where they pull it, and then it comes back, and it's just, how do you be sustainable, given that that happens every few years?
Well, we have been sustainable, because we've had the funding consistently for six years, which to me is pretty sustainable for a nonprofit. Um, and there, so, yeah.
All right. We're getting towards the end of your time, but if you have anything more you wanna wrap up with?
So I'm gonna talk about, um, suggestions for improvements, because I have a few talking points there I wanted to mention. Continue to increase our shelter space across the system, especially for women and families. We have been a recipient of surge dollars from the city, which was great, because I was hoteling people during the heat wave, because, um, Hope House, I don't know, you guys, you guys were full during the heat wave, weren't you? Um, and Family Promise was full, UGM was full. There were no options. So we housed a few households that we wouldn't have normally housed, because we knew there were no other options, women and children specifically. Improvements to the city transportation system. I'd love to see an income-based access to public transportation. Additional focus on homeless prevention and flex funding to kind of replace some of the dollars we lost. Continued support for our local housing authority. We have found great success with our rapid rehousing to Section 8 model. That is a long-term permanent housing success model that does work for my population. And then I want people putting pressure on HUD to increase the fair market rates for our area. They are, oh, they're a joke, um, right now. And then just to talk to funding a little bit, as Fawn would mentioned, um, we get a grant from the city for our core shelter funding, a shelter funding we've had forever. And I just wanna mention that what used to pay for two full-time employees with that grant now pays for one and a half full-time employees with those dollars. That just, you know, as an agency, that puts us at risk of being able to increase those salary dollars to hire and retain quality housing advocates and not have a revolving door of brand-new people that we're training constantly. So, um, questions?
Excellent. Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great presentation, and thanks for all that you do as well. All right. Emma Hughes, come on up. And after Emma is Jonathan Malahan, and then Edie Riceauer.
Gonna get a little closer to this, raise this up. Hi, everyone. I'm Emma Hughes. I'm the Outreach and Recruitment Director at Family Promise. Joe, our Executive Director, who you all hopefully have met and know well, he is actually out of the state, participating in a research study at the University of Notre Dame for Family Promise, so he was not able to be here. Um, that being said, I know many of you know the work of Family Promise. I'm gonna hit just a few key points, and then jump into the questions. The need of families facing homelessness is high. Here in Spokane County, according just to the city's point-in-time count, nearly one in four people experiencing homelessness does so as part of a family unit. And Family Promise serves exclusively adults caring for children or who are pregnant. Um, this is often, these are the faces of the people that we end up serving. Our largest single-age demographic of people that we serve is under the age of one, and we work with the entire family. Our mission here at Family Promise, after we talk about, honestly, it's really sad stuff, our mission here is to equip families and communities to end the cycle of homelessness. We're not really, I mean, we would love to work ourselves out of the need to run a shelter. We would love to end the reality of homelessness for family units, and we're on a mission to actually do that. This is our model, kind of explained in a single visual. We have three key pieces: prevention, provision, and shelter, and then our housing and stabilization. Prevention, since January of '21, um, has prevented over 3,500 family members from becoming homeless altogether. In our shelter systems, we have a variety of different places, from our emergency shelter to our scattered sites. Um, we were able to keep our capacity, under capacity, from December 4th through July 17th. And in the middle of July, we began to see an increased need for shelter, and so we are currently at capacity and are turning away. However, seven months being able to provide for families to move them through shelter into permanent housing is a huge milestone, and has given us a lot of insights as to where we would like to invest in homelessness services moving forward.
Quick question. So what do you do when you have to turn somebody away? What is that? Do you have to, do you try and get them a place to move to or move on to?
Because the only qualifications to access any of our services are that you have a child in your possession, in your care, or are pregnant, and you can pass a National Sex Offender Check. What we will often do is families will just arrive at the front steps of our emergency shelter. We will work with them, but if we know we're at capacity, our frontline shelter supervisors are having conversations with them. We're calling other service providers. And in a lot of cases, families with, you know, a mother and a father aren't wanting to be separated, and so a lot of options that they may qualify for are not of interest to them. Um, and so we work with every family uniquely, and it just kind of depends. But, I mean, it's, it's not my favorite circumstance by any means, and I know it takes a huge toll on our families and on our staff.
When you say the mother and the father are wanting to be separated, can you explain that a little bit more?
So Family Promise is one of the only, if not the only, organization that is a low-barrier program. You can walk in day one of being homeless and find a spot together. We keep the family dog, the family cat, the family lizard, the goldfish, like, whatever, whatever the family is, we keep them together. In other programs, that you could walk in day one, they often, for safety, for whatever reason, I mean, I get it, will ask, you know, mother and child to go over here, father to go over here, um, and families that are, you know, single mom caring for teenage son aren't able to go anywhere, dad caring for young daughter, not able to go anywhere.
You, when you first said it, it sounded like you said they wanted to be separated. I think you meant to say not wanted to be separated.
They do not want to be separated.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Yeah.
No. Um, our final kind of focus in this holistic model is preparation for a stable future. So we work with our families for up to two years after they get into permanent housing to build those skills, build that sustainability for themselves, so that they can stay there. Um, since January of 2020, 98% of the families in that program have remained housed. And when it comes to our numbers, we are incredibly successful at moving families into permanent housing of their own. We'll talk a little bit about that in a second. 98%, like I said, of our families stay in housing and are still there. We check in on them regularly, and they stay housed. When it comes to kind of where we're going and what we are looking for, the way we've broken it up is in the three kind of key areas of our focus. So prevention, we would love to permanently fund our prevention services. The fact that we have seen essentially functional zero, which is a pretty big milestone in this population, and because of slowing the entrance into homelessness, working with our families quickly when they become homeless, and then moving them into housing of their own afterwards, we would love to see a sustainable source of income for that prevention. Additionally, one of our hopes is to get further upstream, and so we've been actually working with landlords and targeting kind of areas and neighborhoods that may qualify for increased access to prevention funding. We would love to be able to share some of the data about where are the landlords? Where are the tenants that need that additional support, so that we can take the initiative to go out and offer that before it's actually immediately needed? That way we can get further upstream. When it comes to provision and shelter, we are expanding our lower level. You all received an invitation to the open house for that on August 18th. That will expand our capacity by 25 beds. We are looking for an additional 110,000 or so to complete the actual remodel of that location, as well as annual operating for the current and expanded shelter of 360 annually. And then I cannot stress enough the, what does it take to move a family from homelessness into housing? The answer is flexible funding. Flexible funding is the name of the game. It allows us to be creative.
It's on the web.
Oh, the web found flexible funding for us. Provide flexible funding to families allows us to meet the uniqueness of each family in a way that solves their homelessness. And so what does that look like? Honestly, anything you can give in flexible funding is incredibly helpful. Kind of in conclusion, two things that I would really love and encourage us to focus on is, don't forget about families facing homelessness. It's really easy, because we see a lot of individuals on the streets, and that's kind of been the challenge and the topic. Families facing homelessness are still part of the picture and are the fastest-growing segment of homelessness across the nation. And then secondarily, cost per outcome matters. Um, we focus on cost per outcome. How much does it cost to move a family from homelessness to housing? For us, right now, we've seen the price increase, but it's $3,249 from day one of homelessness through two years after, and that's for a family of four. So for us, our focus, our hope is to continue to be able to improve that and to sustain that long-term.
Councilmember Cath Carton, and then Councilmember Wilkerson.
Yeah. Did I hear you right? $3,200 for two years to, to move a family of four from homelessness into housing?
Correct.
That's, that's pretty incredible. You mentioned flexible funding and how important that is, and I'm curious, and, and I don't know if, to what extent you might know this, but what, um, what funding streams, I guess, at the state and federal level are flexible that you guys take advantage of that work really well for you, is, is what I'm curious about?
That is a phenomenal question. Off the top of my head, I'm not entirely sure.
Okay. Yeah. I, I'd just be curious to know, because if, if, if there are some things that are clearly working at the state and federal level, uh, funding-wise, then, you know, we should take a look at that and see, and if there's anything at the local level we're gonna do, we might wanna replicate what is actually working, so...
Yeah. No, I'll find out and get back to you.
Great.
So I think you did answer my question. How long does Family Promise follow a family? You said when they get housed, and then you follow them. So it's two-year, your average timeline that you're with the family from beginning to...
Yeah. So, I mean, it's obviously based on the family's preference. So some families do need two-plus years. Some families launch, and they are sustainable the whole time. And for us, it averages to about two years.
Can I do, do a quick follow-up?
Yep.
So that was an amazing amount of money. So that $3,200, is that after they've come out of the emergency shelter? Because I know that's a higher cost. So is that once they're out of shelter and they're in housing? Is that when that amount of money starts?
Good question. It's the whole thing. So date, that does not include prevention services. Before COVID, our prevention cost was about $360 one time. Since COVID, we've seen that increase significantly. Um, our average cost for rental assistance per family now is just over $6,000. Um, but from day one of homelessness, walk into our shelter, through the two years after getting into housing, it's the $3,249.
But that doesn't include rent?
No. So one of the important things that we focus on is families being able to sustain their housing for themselves. So we try really hard to work with landlords and build relationships between our families, the tenant, and the landlord, and most, all of our families are able to jerry-rig either, you know, a Section 8 voucher, or work, or in most cases, kind of all of the above, into paying for their own housing. The $3,249 is specifically for the supportive care and when they're in shelter.
Councilmember Schrute.
Again, question on rent. Are, are you seeing those rates continue to go up?
Yes.
Unbelievably?
It's, um, I spoke with our prevention team a few weeks ago, and they are able, they're authorized according to the rules of the various grants that we have to pay portions of up to 120% of fair market value, and they just came to me, and they're like, "Emma, we're seeing 400%, 300%, and we can't do that." So we're definitely seeing the cost of housing increase beyond what the federal and state funding will allow us to support.
Okay. Quick word, over time, but go ahead, yeah?
Last, last question, comment. Uh, I, I really appreciate the work you guys are doing at the, the House on Mission for, for infants and babies and, and that sort of thing. Just curious, though, cost-wise, is it similar to the $3,250 you're talking about, or is that a different?
So that's through, that number is kind of a flat rate across any shelter access of our program. Um, our neighborhood sites, so what you'll tend to see is on our emergency shelter, are the time it takes tends to be a little bit shorter, but our exits to permanent are a little lower. Around 50% of families will get into permanent housing from our emergency shelter in an average of 61 days.
Okay.
Um, whereas in our neighborhood sites, our exit to permanent is closer to 95%. Whereas in our neighborhood sites, our exit to permanent is closer to 95%, but it does take almost twice as long. And so it just kind of, it just depends. It depends on the needs of the family in most cases.
All right, thanks so much for being here. We'll tell Joey you did an awesome job, so, thanks. All right, Jonathan Malahan, after Jonathan, Edie Rice-Sauer, and then Mike Shaw.
Well, good afternoon, Councilmembers, members of the city council. First off, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today and to speak directly to you. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your busy study session schedules to commit it to this topic. So really appreciate that, that's a huge deal. Eastern, excuse me, Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington has been serving in Spokane for over 100 years. Many of our programs, like St. Anne's Early Learning Center and Kappa Childhood and Parenting Assistance, along with our Rapid Re-Housing Program, are designed to prevent people from ever becoming homeless. But when they do, we have a range of programs that provide emergency response and support with the goal of ensuring that an individual or family's experience in homelessness is both short and that it doesn't happen again. To that end, we provide over 2,600 permanent supportive housing units for families, for seniors, for people living with disabilities, for veterans, and of course, for people who've experienced homelessness. Although Catholic Charities is often known best for emergency shelters, we provide at the House of Charity in St. Margaret's, we're an agency with a wide variety of services, and we believe that everyone's experience of homelessness is unique and that it's most effective to respond to these various experiences of homelessness with many paths out of homelessness. In short, there's no silver bullet. Because of this, we offer programs to meet these differing needs. The House of Charity in St. Margaret's Shelter create trauma-informed, supportive, and permanent housing-oriented services to keep people safe and meet their basic needs during a point of crisis in their lives. We also provide highly structured recovery programs through Rising Strong. This program focuses on reuniting and stabilizing families, helping parents in their recovery process, helping them gain their GED and become stably housed and employed, so that they can be the parents they so desperately want for their children and to ensure their children don't end up being the next generation of folks who need to access our emergency services. I think it's important that we draw a distinction between low barrier and low accountability. I think sometimes those terms are confused. Although we don't place barriers between people who experience homelessness and helping them get a permanent home, our patrons and residents are held accountable for behaviors that support a healthy and safe community. We also recognize that the path out of homelessness and to success and stability isn't often a straight line. So when our residents, when our patrons slip up, we're there to offer support and help for them to stabilize and get back on track. Of course, our goal is for everyone we serve to meet their maximum potential. And this approach works. Over 96% of our residents remain permanently housed 12 months after moving into our units. 87% of our residents are engaged in services on-site. We see a 30% reduction. The SPADA was mentioned earlier today. Now, there's lots of criticisms you can bring to the SPADA, but it is an effective measure of acuity. And we give our residents a SPADA assessment when they move into our properties. And then we reassess them on a quarterly basis. We see a 30% reduction in their SPADA score, their level of vulnerability, within their first year of being housed. That translates not just into a higher quality of life, but it translates into fewer needs where they have to have emergency services respond, which translates into savings for taxpayers. It translates into fewer harmful behaviors. And for us, most importantly, a higher level of human dignity. I shared a letter with you today that gives some more details about our programs and our impact on our community. I'm happy to go into that in more detail, but I thought it might be best just leave a little space for questions at this time.
Well, thank you, Jonathan, and to all the other service providers who are in this room who do the work you do that makes Spokane the place that it is. So I really want to really address, because unfortunately, the only face most people see of Catholic charities is the House of Charity and not the other things that you do throughout the community, especially your housing component. So in your housing, Jonathan, how then is your rent adjusted for the rising cost and inflation?
Well, that's a great question. So we, we have a philosophy that we are never going to evict someone from our housing because of their ability to afford rent. We will evict people from housing because they're not able to conform to behavioral expectations. And so what, what that really means is, as rents and costs have increased and pressure has been put on our residents who may or may not have subsidy to pay their rent, we're seeing more and more people fall behind in their rent. And so that increasing rent is causing more people in our portfolio to struggle with meeting their obligations. But Catholic charities will never charge someone more than 30% of their income. We don't want any of our residents to be housing burdened. And so that means that for those that do have a change in circumstances, we will adjust the rent that they are required to pay. We will also work with them to be connected to subsidy, if they're not already, to help meet that need. But those subsidies are sorely needed. More subsidy is needed for people who are struggling to make ends meet. And we have a backlog of folks that have rent that they haven't been able to pay over the last year or longer, that we still need to support them in coming current, and they want to do that. So we appreciate that the city has been investing in that as well.
Go ahead.
Oh, good, do you want to go first?
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
Oh, go ahead, you go.
Okay, all right. So you said 96% of the people who are receiving services from you transition in a year to their own housing. Did I hear that correct?
That's, no, I said 96% of the people who move into our housing are, remain permanently housed a year after moving in. So it's a measure of success that someone moving from, you know, let's say the streets into housing, it works. They're still there, they don't return to homelessness.
Gotcha, so that could be in your housing still, correct, okay. And then lastly, I've heard, again, people staying housed, and I guess I'm, I'm curious on this number as I'm hearing, you know, these high 90 numbers, which is absolutely incredible. How many people, on average, in the city of Spokane, find themselves falling into homelessness for whatever reason on an, on an annual basis?
That's a, that's a great question, and I think there could be a lot of good research done to understand the inflow into homelessness. That's not a number that I think we have a good grasp on. We have a much better grasp on the number of people exiting homelessness. And an interesting thing is that the number of people exiting homelessness has been increasing for years, and the cost of delivering those outcomes has been decreasing for years because of the amazing work that the people you've called here today are doing. But the reality remains that the rate of entry into homelessness is increasing at a far faster pace than those exits from homelessness. And so we really need to focus on not just creating more exits from homelessness, but preventing more entries into homelessness.
And I guess if I, if I could continue. So I, in this, in this prevention, what are the ways that the city can help prevent people from falling into homelessness in ways? We heard, you know, Family Promise just said it used to be a few hundred dollars, to now it's, you know, several thousand dollars in that way. What are ways that we can, again, potentially swim upstream to help prevent that, that moment that ever happens?
Childcare, transportation, and housing. We need there to be options for parents. We need there to be options for, for people who are looking for all sorts of types of housing, whether it's market rate or affordable housing. Those are the solutions that are going to get us ahead of this problem in Spokane.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks so much. And you and I have been in communication for the last, what, two weeks over Equality Inn? So two questions. One, you mentioned that people stay in your, in the facility unless they commit something, some behavioral issue. Do you, at that point, work with them to help correct that rather than ask them to leave? Or how does that work?
Yeah, great question. So we, I mean, it, the answer is, it depends, right? In, in almost every case, we are, if someone slips up, we are going to offer services. We may put them on what is, is known as a risk-to-tenancy agreement, which says, hey, you violated the expectations of our community, and you're creating conditions that are unsafe for neighbors. We're going to let you stay and remain housed, but we need you to do these things as a condition of your continued housing. We don't put those conditions on people to come into the housing, but when they're there and they're struggling, it is our approach to hold them accountable to those expectations that they can be a good neighbor. If they fail and slip up again, depending, again, on those circumstances, we might move directly to eviction after that.
Okay, and then my last question, well, probably not my last, but my second question is, and somebody alluded to this. You have all these wonderful, all of you have these wonderful programs. It's probably the best-kept secret in the community. And I say that because whenever a housing program is going to be relocated or located in a neighborhood or somewhere, we get such backlash. And people immediately go to, it's going to be low barrier, and then they have a set image in their mind of what that is. There's going to be drug use, there's going to be theft, vandalism, you name it. So I'm wondering if we all could do a better job of messaging and talking about your successes and talking about the good work that you're doing and that that is not necessarily an outcome of moving a transitional housing into a neighborhood. So the, the outcomes are that people actually get housed after that and that people actually get services. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we all, you all could work with us to create a better message going out in the community. So when you do locate something, something, somewhere, that you don't get this backlash from neighborhoods. And so that is my pledge, that I would be able to work with you to do that, because I think we could create better outcomes that way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, so as was mentioned, you know, there's a prioritization of higher barrier folks who are put into the different housing units. At that point, if they are, you know, drug addicted, or they have some, some mental health concerns, I mean, they're housed, but what are you guys doing in that situation to try and help to further advance them out of their, their addictions or other things? And then the other question, and this we can answer offline. I'm just really curious about your engagement efforts in the West Hills and kind of what's going on there. But we can, we can chat about that offline.
Yeah, I'll follow up with you on that, Councilman. Great question on the engagement. And we have residents that come to us with the highest of barriers by, by design, right? And so we staff our apartment buildings with case managers. Those are individuals who are clinically trained to help people set their own goals and take concrete steps to move forward in their lives and achieve those goals. We staff it with peer supports. Those are individuals with lived experience of homelessness, and those are really critical individuals on our properties. Because when you've been homeless for 10 years, you've been let down a multitude of times. Just every day, constant disappointment. You've been ignored at best and vilified at worst. And so you come into housing and, and you don't trust, and that's understandable. But someone who has come out the other side, our peer supports, we know that our residents respond positively to that. So their job is to develop trusting, meaningful relationships with our new residents and help connect them into the community. Relationships change lives, and that's what peer supports do in such a meaningful way. We then layer on top of that more clinically-trained staff that have substance use disorder training. We have, we're a licensed behavioral health provider, so we have counselors and therapists that help people move beyond the trauma they've experienced in their lives and set a new course for themselves. And, and the reduction in acuity, the preservation of housing are great examples of how that works.
And just a quick follow-up. Do you guys keep statistics or have data on the, the number of folks who, who you've helped to move forward after they've been housed?
So you're, you're saying who have maybe graduated into permanent, other forms of permanent housing?
Well, they're, they're in the, you know, the havens downtown, so they're housed, they're, they're off the streets, but they might still be mentally ill or drug addicted. Do you have statistics on the numbers that you have helped to move beyond their addiction after you've housed them in the, in the havens?
I see, yes, we, we do. And, and, and the number in your letter is this reference to the SPADA score, but I'm happy to follow up with you with other stats on our success for our residents.
That'd be great.
All right, so we're through your time. Thank you so much, Jonathan, and Edie Rice-Sauer, and then Mike Shaw, and then Marty McKinney.
I have a PowerPoint, thank you. Good afternoon, good morning, I think, I don't even know what it is right now. I know all of you. Yeah, it's cookie time. I know all of you, I don't know Councilperson Bingle, so I'm Edie Rice-Sauer, Executive Director of Transitions. It's nice to meet you. And we've got a PowerPoint. Our Transitions is a local not-for-profit. It's not connected to a national organization, so its mission is to end poverty and homelessness for women and children in Spokane. And we pursue this mission through a number of different programs. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our programs, because I think a lot of people don't really know what's part of Transitions and what's not. Often, we get asked, are we part of Catholic Charities, for example? And we always have to answer that one. So we pursue this mission of ending poverty and homelessness through the operation of the Women's Hearth Transitional Living Center, or TLC, Miriam's House, the Home Yard cottages, Educare, Cento Commons, and New Leaf Kitchen and Cafe. The latter three, by the way, receive no funding through the city. Oh, I wanted to mention, I have Sarah Lickfold with me, who's our Development Director. So let me talk about the Women's Hearth. That's kind of a unique, one-of-a-type program in downtown Spokane on Second Avenue between Lincoln and Monroe. We provide, I call it sort of like running a summer camp, actually, there. We provide as many services as possible to welcome women into our community. We also serve people who identify as female. We will do social service referrals, classes. We have all kinds of housing search case management and compassionate supportive environment. So we have phones there, we have legal services, computers, healthy food, hygiene supplies, free showers in the, in a respite room if someone's sick. During 2021, we served, we had 5,000 visits from, and this year, 2,500 visits. Last year, 21 women obtained housing through our program. We also run the Road to Renting Program. It used to be called, I can't even, Responsible Runner. And we just went through a process where we renamed that. Glad you guys know this. 221 people received certificates for that. That's really prepares people, especially if they have eviction histories or poor credit, and a landlord looks at them and goes, why would I rent to you? At least they can present a certificate where they've shown they've gone through classes, they've learned about tenant rights and landlord rights, about budgeting, and about living with a roommate. So those sorts of things are taught as part of that. And for the Women's Hearth, the city covers 12% of our costs at that program. Transitional Living Center is a supportive transitional housing program for women, so heads of household and their children. They're also coming through coordinated assessment. They're going through the SPADA before they come to us, and we have 15 apartments that serve them. That's off of Northwest Boulevard. On-site, we have case management, support groups, and parenting education classes. Sometimes for the families who come to us, this might be the first time they've actually been together, living in a unit. They have, we have one, two, and three-bedroom units for them, so it's self-contained. Many of them have come through state custody issues, and so maybe they're reuniting for the first time in a long time with their children. During the last year and a half, we had 10 families move from TLC into permanent housing, and 10 moms became employed, and we served 74 persons last year in that program. There, again, the city covers 12% of our costs. And I, I say that because it's important to know we all are looking for all kinds of funding from all over the place all the time. Miriam's House is also a transitional housing program. It's focused on single women who are homeless. Many of the women who come to us are dealing with some kind of crisis, whether it's abuse, addiction, or some kind of displacement. We provide the transitional housing in a really beautiful older home. It's a former convent, but it was also a family home at one time. And we can serve nine or 10 women there at a time. They each have their own room, but it is a communal setting where they share kitchens and their, a family room together. During the past year and a half, 12 women moved into permanent housing from that program, and 10 women became employed. And we do an ongoing and fairly robust alum program through Miriam's House. So when someone leaves Miriam's, somehow we often think that once they get into housing, everything's fine, and they can just continue on a linear path, and everything keeps getting better. Well, that's not the way life happens. So we're there to support them as they move out and they continue to come back to us for counseling services, maybe some kind of, maybe they need to deal with some conflict resolution with a roommate, or maybe they've stopped taking their mental health meds, and they need to get back on track with that. So that's the kind of aftercare that we provide for them. At Miriam's House, the city covers 21% of our costs. Home Yard cottages is one of our newer permanent supportive housing programs. It's permanent housing in 24 cottages, and 15 of them are net zero. We provide case management there and community activities, not during COVID so much, but since then, for the residents. And we hired the Housing Authority to be our property manager there. Much like Jonathan mentioned, my, my goal there is that no one's evicted. Sometimes we have to go there, but we really try to make every attempt to keep people housed. We know that once someone's in housing, then they lose that housing. We're back another five to 10 years, and we don't want that to happen. So last year, we housed 67 people through the cottages, and no one was evicted. The city covers 32% of our costs there because we really only provide the case management. So you're covering a third of those costs.
Hey, Edie, I was just going to follow up on, on Councilmember Kinnear's comment about getting information out to the communities. So when organizations move into neighborhoods, it, it makes it a little easier. If anybody wants to know how to do it correctly, it's Edie. And this program was, I don't know, two years of working with neighbors, going to neighborhood councils, being available for questions, talking to the neighboring businesses. And it is so nice to see that it's, it's come full circle, and the neighborhood has, for the most part, then, most part, been fine. I mean, it's worked really well, but there was a lot of work on your part to calm people, so thank you.
Thank you.
But Edie knows what she's doing with that.
Well, I say I know more about sewage and roads in Audubon Down River than anyone should know, from going to those neighborhood council meetings. I'm also going to talk a little bit about programs that are not funded, not funded through you all at all, just so you know, because I think sometimes it's helpful to know our whole array of services. Cinto Commons is our newest project, that's in partnership with Community Frameworks who developed that project. That's 47 apartments, one, two, and three-bedroom there. We have staff on-site, we're doing the same model there that we do at the cottages, and we provide case management to the residents. So if we have a difficult situation with a resident, we're working with them. I want to give you an example because sometimes I don't think people understand this. We had somebody at the cottages who had a flat tire, and they kept getting notices from the Housing Authority because, you know, we don't want nuisance things on our properties, we want them to look nice. Well, he was actually at risk of being evicted eventually because he could not fix the flat tire. Well, finally, the case managers became aware of what was happening, he just didn't have the money to do that. We have direct service support dollars for the kinds of situations like that. That's the kind of intervention that happens all the time at all of our sites, is we're trying to prevent someone from finding themselves in a situation where they're no longer housed. So Cinto Comes is brand-new, still, so I don't have a lot of data on that, but very exciting. If you want a tour, by the way, of any of these sites, please let me know. EduCare is our early learning facility on our campus, it's a licensed facility, just like any other licensed care center, and we provided care for 22 children last year. We can provide services, education services, to any child who's dealing with homelessness. We primarily serve people who are living in the cottages and at TLC. This program in particular is focused on trauma-informed care. We have, all of our children have been homeless, many of them have lived in cars, many of them have seen domestic violence situations, so our staff have to be particularly trained in focusing on behavior issues that are probably related to the trauma. And then New Leaf Kitchen and Cafe, which is where your cookies come from, seems like, jeez, I had a kitchen, I should bring cookies. It's a job training program in the culinary arts. We have both the kitchen and the SNAP building on Whitstock Way, and then we now have two cafe sites, one is at the YW YMCA, and then the brand-new one in the Central Library, so stop by if you get a chance. Last year, we helped 25 people obtain employment. Lastly, actually, yeah, lastly, let me talk about some major concerns. I mean, you've heard this, we're pretty much in sync with most of the people who've already spoken, ongoing operations. If you receive HUD money, that has not increased at all percentage-wise, so if you're paying staff with HUD money, you're losing money at this point. There's no COLAs, so you're paying out of some other pot of money because HUD's not covering it. Personally, at Transitions, we increased our salaries right before COVID, we've done it twice since then. Our minimum wage now is $18 an hour, we could not keep staff otherwise, and everybody's dealing with that, but that has a huge impact on our bottom line. The issue of increasing affordable housing and housing of all types along that continuum, you've heard it from everybody else here, too. It's, for example, it's hard for us, we might have somebody coming into transitional housing and then we can't get them out because there's no place for them to go, even if they have a voucher from the Housing Authority or they have some other kind of assistance, it's almost impossible. And the fact that we've been successful at all, I think, is a statement to the staff and the commitment to really make it possible. I have a major concern about domestic violence impacts, so 90% of the women we serve come from some kind of a domestic violence situation. It's a huge issue in Spokane. Since 2005, domestic violence offenses per 1,000 residents in Spokane is almost double that of Washington State. So know that those numbers are huge. If you want any data, John's here, I'm here, a lot of us know these situations. The last six months of 2021, we had 40 families come to us who needed transitional housing because they were coming from a domestic violence situation, often from the shelter the YW runs or maybe from Lutheran. We couldn't serve them. We had 40 families in six months last year that we could not serve, it was terrible. Thank you for the money, though, that came on Monday, that's really incredible and so positive, it's just, it's an ongoing issue and it's a huge problem in Spokane. And then lastly, you've heard this already about mental health assistance. We too, part of our strategic plan is to become a behavioral health organization, we just cannot get people into services. Again, as you've heard, acuity levels continue to rise, and we've just found that we need to start becoming, providing that service ourselves because we just can't get people into the services they need, there's just not enough. And COVID has not helped. Okay, any questions?
Edie, the cookies were fabulous.
Thanks, I can't take any credit myself.
But you brought them, so. So, talking about mental health assistance, I spoke with one of our legislators and we were talking about this, and I said, is there any way the state can beef up what they're giving to providers? And he said, it's something that they are wanting to do, it's just a matter of convincing everybody in the legislature, this is a huge need. It's probably the most important thing we could do right now because, just as you said, the level of help that's needed is off the charts. So my question is, are you at some point, is the group at some point, working together to lobby our legislators to increase the amount of, not just mental health money, but how do we get people to work in that field? Because it's, you know, it's the money, but then it's also the staff. So is there a plan that you can share that, or develop, that going forward you'll have some way to talk to our legislators and say, help?
I think that continues every year. I mean, all of us have advocacy groups as part of our organizations, and through SLIC and other groups, we try to advocate for various issues like that, so we've already been doing that. Part of what's happening on the local level is, so there's a Medicaid waiver for Washington State, and like, we're currently billing for that for housing and employment services. What you can also build for is behavioral health services, so that's what VOA is looking at, Catholic Charity's been doing it for years, that's what we're looking at. So we're in that process. So in some ways, it's kind of bypassing the state system and just going right to CMMS and the federal system to try to access dollars through that.
But you still need staff.
Yeah, now, you know, Eastern Washington kicks out more MSWs than almost anybody in the state, so there are significant, there's a significant pipeline, but yeah, it's a tough program, and also if you want to be a clinician in that field, it takes a considerable amount of time to build that. So yeah, it's a tough situation, and I'm not sure I have an answer for that in terms of increasing the amount of people that go in to become staff.
Thanks.
All right.
Anything else?
Edie, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
All right, Mike Shaw, come on down, and after Mike, Marty, and then Julie, on a camp.
... arthritis in my left knee, so I'm good.
All right.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of all you folks. I really appreciate the invite, Mr. Beck, thank you.
Do you need that chair, we have that chair that's against the wall over there.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Michael Shaw is my name, I'm the Executive Director and Founder of the Guardians Foundation. We have been operating the Cannon Street Shelter since the spring of 2020, and we have been able to perform at a level that I believe City Council has accepted of. The neighborhood situation, I think, is very stable. There's a little bit more pressure going into the neighborhood now with the fencing and whatnot, it's kind of pushing that way, but I believe that we're doing a really good job there. We've been at about 100% capacity every single night since we've opened. I think that's a testament to our services and the way we conduct business down there. And we're, excuse me, just very pleased to be operating, I believe, is a very smooth operation, and I hope that's the reflection that you folks have, too. I know Councilmembers have been down a few times, and I believe the outcome has been positive. And so, and also, of course, the 900-pound elephant in the room is Trent Street Shelter, which we've been recommended to operate. We've been working very hard at putting together a package that we believe addressed most people's concerns about the way that shelter should be operated as far as City Council's point of view, the mayor's office point of view, the community's point of view, the advocates' point of view. I just left the Homeless Coalition meeting this morning, I did a full presentation to them, and that was very well-received, so I was happy to leave that group with much more detailed information that gave them an opportunity for one-on-one questioning, so that was good, that was good. My presentation today is not going to be very long, but our big concern, of course, at Cannon, is we kind of, we love the showers and we love the upgrades and whatnot, but I believe the big, our biggest concern at Cannon is, of course, it's a functionally obsolete building for what we're doing from day one. We make the best use of it, we don't deal in square footage, we actually deal in cubic feet because we stack them in there pretty good, but our incidence of behavior issues are at a minimum. So I think we're utilizing the space to its fullest potential.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes, can I?
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you. So I've been down to the Cannon Shelter in the spring, it was pretty crowded, everybody was very, very nice. My question is, so what kind of services are provided to the people that come to the shelter? I know they get a bed and they have a place to lock their items, but what other services, are there any wraparound services for?
We don't have any funding in that or RFPs for case management or anything of that nature, but I have a philosophy that we're not going to be deemed a warehouse. So every one of our staff members are engaged in some sort of identifying whatever the individual's needs are and get them pointed in the right direction. And of course, as management, we coordinate with all of our partners over here behind us and all the ones, all of our vendors, like the Compasses and the Snaps, to get them pointed in the right direction. Specifically on housing, we have about 80 people every month, but we are able, even without, you know, specific programs, we're able to get 10% of those a month into permanent housing, so we're very happy about that without the structured programs. And our turnover is also increasing, more people are utilizing, they stay a little longer than they probably should at our shelter, they consider it their home almost, but that's increasing, that's been moving along, a little shorter stays. So that's a good thing, and with our, about 10% are getting into transitional housing or permanent housing, or we reconnect back to their family members in any way we can, if it's a safe way. So we're utilizing all methods that everyone else utilizes, but we just, we do it with the funds we have, and we're proud of that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Yes, I have. I just want to make something clear about flexible funding. So all the providers know I'm in mental health and I understand funding and how that funding is stacked. So you got the federal and the state, and you got the county, and then you got the city, and then you got philanthropy, but what comes through the city is not flexible funding, and we have really never looked at budgeting for flexible funding for shelters to really meet the needs that we are hearing now that have bubbled up over the last few years. So that's our challenge, and I don't know if we as a city or CHHS, I haven't really looked at the holistic picture of that stacked funding and really what that gap is and how we're going to meet that funding source, because it is extremely limited. If it hadn't been for CARES and ARPA dollars, our community would have been, we would have not met the needs of our community.
To your point, we're in budget meetings with the City Administrator and our Finance Department, and it doesn't look good even for the shelter, the Trent Street Shelter going forward past the next 12 months. We have to figure out how we're going to do that, I'm not sure, everyone seems to think it'll work, but as of right now, we are in a situation where we only have funding for operations for possibly 12 to 16 months. So I totally understand your point. In the RFP, it does ask for the service provider to come up with some sort of funding source to supplement somehow, some way, but when we're talking four to $5 million, that's a big lift for an organization such as mine, but we're going to do anything we can.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, first off, you gave us all quite a scare and really glad to see that you're doing much better now and are here to be able to present. I guess my question is real simply, you know, you mentioned that you're full every day and there's not a ton of turnover, but have you seen a change in, I guess, who is utilizing Cannon as we've seen some of the camps grow, especially the one in East Central? Have you seen a lot of folks who have left Cannon to go join those camps, or is that not something you've seen?
No, no, they may go down and visit or do things like that. It's a bigger turnover, but it's still a very stable population. And it's stable because they like it there, but it's also stable because of the bottlenecks at all of our organizations behind us, we don't have places to put these folks with the incomes they have and what they can present. And also, my population probably has, they're not, they're not prepped to be the best candidates for individual housing, yet. They'd have to be, the other organizations have great programs to get them prepped and ready to be on their own. An emergency warming shelter doesn't really have that capability to get them ready to do that. So failure getting into transitional housing or permanent housing would be probably quite high without case management following them.
All right. Well, Mike, thanks for coming down here, and thanks for sharing, and thanks for all that you do in your organization, I really appreciate it.
Looking forward to the next big phase, thank you so much, all of you.
Looking forward to those, the fruits of that negotiation, we're still waiting for it, so thanks for your part of that. All right, Marty McKenney from Truth Ministries.
I'm going to pull up your emails so I get your questions right, so I don't rattle on forever. Thanks for inviting me. And thank you, everybody, for what you do, pretty incredible people and things going on here. So I'm Marty, Truth Ministries of Spokane. 2003, my wife and I opened a homeless shelter. At first, we did men and women, for the last probably 16, 17 years, it's just been men. We just do men primarily. So the question, what do you most want City Council to know about your current operations? Well, we are a low-barrier shelter. Our staff and our volunteers that help us, we train every week, we talk about issues every week, we talk about de-escalation and how to handle problems and people with addiction and maybe mental health issues and how to take the emotion out. It's very important because if we're not training the people that are working on our shelters, then a lot of times people get abused and sometimes people get hurt. I could tell you stories over the years of some of the people that we've had that would probably scare you, freak you out, because it did us. Most of the time, running a shelter, you know, it's people, and you treat people with some respect and dignity and honor, and you'll get that back, but every once in a while, you'll get a situation that you got to deal with, and training is pretty important to us. So we try to, try to stay on point with that once a week, we're going through that with all of our guys. Wraparound services, Frontier Behavioral Health, CHAZ Clinic, SNAP, Compass, all come down all week, so Monday through Friday during the day, they're coming in, the street team doctor comes in every two weeks to see people that may have some things going on. As far as people getting in apartments, it's slowed down quite a bit, I think last month we had six. The only caseworkers, if you come down to the shelter at night and you wanted a bed, Monday through Friday, you're going to meet my wife and I. We're hands-on every single night except for the weekends, and we love it. So... So, you know, during the day, we don't do a whole lot of meetings and different things. So some people don't even know who we are. That's because we're working at night. We love it that way. It's been pretty amazing. And I just lost your email. What's the next question?
Well, you kind of already answered, what are your statistics for moving people out of homelessness into permanent housing?
Okay, yeah. About six. So I would say we're averaging about 50 people right now. In the winter, we can run 64 to 70. We've had winter nights where we've had 110 people for, I think a couple of years ago, we had 110, 111 people for a couple of weeks before we were able to get them dispersed to other areas. But right now during the summer months, it slows down. So we're running about 50 guys. And like I said, this last month, it was six guys into apartments. One of them, I've known for the full 19 years that we've been doing this. He came to see us downtown and at that time, when we just started, he was in the midst of a drug addiction and those different things. And then he disappeared for a while and he showed back up at our door here a couple of years ago. And he's one of these guys that can't read, can't really comprehend a lot of things unless you really talk it through. And I was able to walk with him through it with, if you've ever seen the pamphlet that SNAP gives you, you got to go through to get into housing. It was a migraine headache and it helped him through it. And he kept telling me, there's no way I'm going to get housing. My record is, my record that a couple of weeks ago, we moved him in. I just had breakfast with him this morning. He bought me breakfast this morning. And that was, he volunteered for us down at the shelter for about a year, maybe a little over a year. And he's the best laundry guy we've ever had. What gaps that could be filled to increase the number of people served and the effectiveness of the service provided by your organization? Well, one of the huge ugly things that we're seeing a lot, and it's increasing, is senior citizens with beginning stages of dementia, or maybe they got full-on dementia, a lot of handicapped people, people that need services that we really would have a hard time providing because we're a low-barrier shelter. So believe it or not, we get people dropped off right at the door. We had one two weeks ago. The guy was in a wheelchair, couldn't get out of his wheelchair to go to the bathroom or anything else and could hardly communicate. And he was dropped off by family at our back door. So these sort of things happen a lot. So we really need something, the mental health issue, the elderly with, you know, they need full-time care, some of these people. And it's very hard to get them placed and find a place to put them. So we have to try to deal with it for a while until we can make the right phone call to try to get him somewhere. And sometimes we just got to send him to hospital and hope that they got somebody that's going to find that person a place to go. A lot of times, we'll get ahold of family and they don't want anything to do with helping us. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I don't know if you know this, but are there programs in Spokane specifically that target seniors and helping them with sheltering?
I don't believe so, is there?
Aging and long-term care.
Yeah, but there's no sheltering in particular?
There's not a shelter that I'm aware of. But it is something that I would be willing to work with anybody on to try to get the problem solved.
Seems like a big gap, so.
It's a huge gap. And it's very concerning because when you have somebody that can't take care of themselves, you know, anything can happen in a shelter. So you need to have people that can at least go to the bathroom on their own and take care of themselves. You get somebody that has dementia and boy, there's all kinds of things that can happen. We... Yes? That would be huge.
And I'm just going to repeat in the microphone. So that was Mike Shaw from Guardian saying that when Trent opens, he's hoping he can move some of his Cannon people who are more independent, ambulatory, and then have more ability to care for people with other barriers at Cannon.
And obviously, you got my phone number. Give me a call, whatever you can do to make things happen. I think the last question on here is what suggestions do I have for the city's participation? One of the biggest frustrations for me is the lack of us really having an idea of what's really going on. We know that the homeless situation has gone up. We know that the drugs are a problem and different things. But last year, I was in conversation with, let's just say, a head individual. And I said, we're going to have a problem in the wintertime. There's a lot of people camping out. Well, how many? I said, well, they're telling me quite a few. Well, let's talk about that and let's see what it looks like. Okay, so the next week, what I did is I set up a time to sit down with every outreach worker I could think of, from CHAZ Clinic to SNAP to Goodwill, all of them that you can think of, right? There was five or six. And I met with them all individually at separate times. And they all told me about the same thing. They were figuring about 1,200 at least people camping outside. And they all told me that nobody from the city ever asked them what they see on the streets, what they deal with. I said, okay, so this individual I was talking about, a higher-up, I called back. Well, I'm going to have my assistant call you. Okay? Week goes by, no call. Two weeks go by, no call. I call back and say, hey, are we still going to work on this? Said, winter's coming. Okay, I got a call Thursday before Christmas wanting to open the convention center. I tried for months to try to help. I have been doing this for 19 years. I can help a little bit. I'm willing to and I want to. But there has to be some place where we're all, including the mayor and you guys, meet in the middle and say, let's give and take a little bit and make some stuff happen. That's what you could improve on. As far as funding us, thank you very much. We couldn't do it without your funds. We are reaching in to find out some other things about funding to see if we can, you know, compensate that a little bit, maybe bring the numbers down for the city. That's future. What we are working on, the last thing, before I forget, the biggest thing that we're working on with Frontier right now is we're going to become like an ID restoration hub at our shelter. What that means is they're having trouble because the IDs, when they finally get the IDs or the birth certificates, whatever it is they're working on, it gets mailed off somewhere, you know. So we're going to have one place. That'll be our place that it'll be mailed at. And then we're going to be taught ourselves the full process, all the paperwork that all the guys need for housing, ID restoration, all of that. And we're putting that together in a training program to be able to get some more people on board to make. They say at the Tent City, 80% at least don't have IDs. You guys know, we can't do anything without IDs. So that is happening. That's in the works. Next week, we meet with Frontier and she's going to start teaching us. We are doing videos on de-escalation and some different things. I will tell you that we offered with Mike, we'll help you with training. You got to hire some guys. He said, great, I'll put it in my budget. City shot it down. City said, we don't need training. What do you want to pay that for? Well, do you guys know how to run a homeless shelter? Apparently, somebody from the city does. But we don't need money. We're going to be done with those videos and we will have training. And we're going to make sure that the people that are working in the shelters are safe. We can't just worry about the people coming into the shelters that we want to keep safe. Of course, we want to keep them safe. But what about the people that are working there? Again, I'll leave you with this. I could tell you stories over the 19 years of some of the people that I've had to deal with in our shelters and it would freak you out, I guarantee it. If you want to hear a story, I'll give you one. Go ahead, yeah?
Yeah, so two things. One, on the IDs, you know, I saw that survey that came out from the camp and it mentioned, I think it was more like 95% didn't have IDs. But the thing that was, that really flabbergasted me was the fact that it said 50 of those individuals who didn't have IDs had caseworkers. And I was, my first thought was, well, what the hell are these caseworkers doing? Like, shouldn't the very first thing you do is get that person IDs? Because nothing else you do down the line is going to work if they don't have that ID. So I was really frustrated to see that. And so what I'm wondering is if there's an opportunity to partner with the state, since they're the ones that obviously issue the IDs, and connect them into our shelter system so that when somebody walks through those doors, they can immediately get access to all those documentations that they need, rather than a ridiculous, you know, weeks, months-long process trying to find somebody who can help them. There's got to be a way that they can walk in the doors of the shelter. There's a state system set up and boom, they get access to anything they need right there. And there's got to be a way to do that.
I can tell you, every caseworker that I know that works with our population, there's not enough of them. There's not enough if we wanted. If, there's just not enough. From Frontier, you're only going to see a handful. Just in my shelter, 50 to 70 to 100 people. And you have maybe, you know, five people that you can choose from that can come in there and work with people. How many people are they going to be able to spend quality time with to get something done? Not very much. But we can start working on it. We can start looking for funding and we can start hiring people and training them. We've got to do something if we're going to get this under control.
Well, and I don't know if it's Commerce or Enterprise Services or who it would be, but somebody from the state can develop a system that would make this work, connect with DOL and...
I'd love to have a further conversation with you and try to get some fires lit under...
I think it'd be great. So my other question is, we've heard for, or I've heard for the last year or two that, you know, the folks over in Esba, in the Spray area, you know, they would love to see you guys move to a 24/7 model. And I'm just kind of curious what those conversations are like. Is that something that you guys have an interest in?
Sure. Here's the whole issue with that. How it started years ago is we didn't have funding. We just operated off a donation. So my wife and I had to work. And we just said, well, you know, during the day, they need to be looking for work and following through and talking with caseworkers and everything. So that ought to work out. And it has actually worked out fairly well. When we moved into the building that we're at now, before we even got into the building, the neighborhood all got together and asked us to come for a meeting. And we were shocked. We didn't, I mean, it was a Frankenstein meeting. They had the torches lit. We were the monster, right? And I made them a promise. I said, we will police our own as much as possible to make sure that our neighborhood strip here isn't a problem. And the head guy of that, just met him over at the new shelter before, when we were looking at it. And I haven't seen him in 14 years. And I walked up, I said, hey, I'm Marty. You remember me? He goes, oh, yeah. I said, did we keep our promise? He said, for the most part, you did. And he shook my hand. It's very important, I mean, we can pay for more people and everything to try to police those sidewalks and everything, but we already do that now. We're getting people that are sleeping on sidewalks in front of the business and the business will call us. And it's probably not even our person. But we will come and try to show them, try to treat them respectfully and explain, you know, our businesses don't like you doing this and we're right here. You want to keep us open? And usually, our homeless population completely understand where we're coming from. So the effects on the neighborhood is something that we're, if we open during the day... So let me counteroffer that. What if when we're open during the day, there's something productive going on? And if you're not part of the productive list, then you have to go somewhere else during the day. Same as we do now. What if you can meet with Frontier Behavior Health, the doctor, all the things that I'm talking about? Talk about housing. Let's get this squared away. So we have some people that do stay with us and stuff, but it's not a full 70, 100 people. Blessings to Julie Garcia and Jules Helping Hands because she's seen the need and she knows why we're not open during the day. And her building that they operate now, she called me up. She said, we're just up the street. Send your guys up here. Well, only a handful of our guys go up there. The rest of them have stuff to do. In fact, two guys got jobs with the city yesterday. We're buying them steel-toed boots today.
Awesome.
Anyway, it's not that we don't want to be open 24/7. It's not that it's not possible. But I want to keep my promise to that neighborhood. Unless we figure out a way to do it effectively, it would turn into what you have down here. Sorry, but it would. So can we have conversations of how can we make that happen? Well, yes, but it's going to take longer than a real quick email. Hey, Marty, can you be open 24/7? Well, that's not a conversation. Because you don't have to just talk me into it. You have to talk my wife into it. And she's far worse than I am. But there's reasons why. And it's not because we don't care. Yes.
I want to add to that because Edie's not here, or is she?
She's not. Julie had a migraine.
You know what? Edie has transitions and that model perhaps could be used for your facility where there's actually, you're doing things that are productive at the facility. So you're looking for jobs. You have a case manager. You learn a skill. You have computers that you do whatever it is. So it's not just people twiddling their thumbs when they're in your facility. So Edie's model is, right, you're at Hope House. You stay the night. Then you can go to transitions during the day. And there are actual activities that are productive for you to do that are furthering your development as you're going through your journey. So I'm throwing that out there. You're right, it's a discussion for a longer time, but it would be worth having, I think.
We'd definitely have a conversation. In our next budget that we put out, we put in for another salary for a caseworker. And it's our idea that we're going to be doing a lot of stuff during the day with our clientele that come in there. We'd also like to add some more possible washer and dryer so we can get the guys to be able to have a change of clothes. Because we're going through a lot of clothes and they just throw them away. We got an instantaneous water heater installed today so everybody can get showers. That's a big thing. Anyway, that's it.
My sense, Marty, from visiting and talking with you is that a lot of your target population do have other things during the day. They're pretty independent. They've got, some of them have jobs and that's kind of the thing. And I've talked with you about the 24/7 too. And it's, there's always this question of mixing populations. But your population seems a little more independent. And then there's other ones that just almost can't function, like we were just talking about. And it doesn't necessarily mix well.
We have those too.
You have some of those too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What we don't have, I will tell you, you know, I think Mike kind of mentioned it. There is a big difference between a lot of the people that stay at the Tent City and the people that do stay in our shelters. A lot of those people that we, I can walk, I've walked through there. People don't even, they don't know me or nothing, you know. So anyway, that's all I got. I'm going to stop.
Marty, thank you again for coming down and for all the work that you do. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. God bless you.
Yep. All right, and Julie Homecamp is going to bring us home?
And while Julie's coming, I want to say back to flexible funding for everything that was mentioned here today, that the city has not dedicated money to make those things happen. So great ideas, no money.
Yep.
So good afternoon. Julie Homecamp with SNAP. And I've asked my colleague, Amy Johnson, who was with our homeless team, to join us today as well. So I'm not going to spend time talking about SNAP's programs. I'm trying to hit kind of the highlights and hopefully we can get through this here in maybe five minutes and have a conversation. So here we go. So I wanted to start on a positive note. What's been good? SNAP was able to stay open in our homeless services team throughout the pandemic. Didn't close for a single day. Staff is trying to remain resilient, although I'd have to say homeless service providers in our community are facing a lot of trauma. I mean, just plain, if not physical assault, a lot of compassion fatigue and trauma hearing what's going on. We still do twice daily walk-ins for homeless folks. And we've got some new funding through something called a centralized diversion fund. And if there's more questions about that, Amy can handle those. What's been challenging? People have talked a little bit already about hiring and retention, increased level of acuity. You've heard that. A lot of frustration for people that have had trust broken. We can assess people all you want, but if there's no place to house them, there's a great deal of frustration. So people are having a harder time engaging even with our homeless service team. Obviously, if you were resources, we've talked a little bit about rising rents, pretty much functional zero. Provider bandwidth right now, yeah, there's not a lot of bandwidth in our provider network right now. And then it's just taking time to work with folks is longer because there's no housing. So you asked about statistics and I want to be the champion here for thinking about our housing as a broader continuum. I mean, today, we're talking about homeless. But just like a city has to think about roads and sewer and tax and zoning, our housing system is much broader, right? It's everything from put in a wheelchair ramp, right, home repair, to homeownership and foreclosure prevention and shelters and that missing middle housing. And when you don't think of it holistically and just focus on one piece, that is part of what creates our system's problem, right? And I know we've been super focused on homeless. And I am super grateful for all of our providers that are homeless providers. But as you can hear, the business model doesn't work. We used to be shelter providers in the 70s and 80s. We can't make the math work. And we get asked... And we get asked to, but we won't, we don't, we don't do it any longer. So here's some stats. You all have the presentation, but you can see about moving people out of homelessness, doing the assessments. We do have a portfolio, about 400 units of housing ourselves. Foreclosures, saved 97 homes from foreclosures, a lot of home repairs, weatherization, first-time home buyers, the whole continuum. So on the service delivery side, so kudos to you all on the zoning and the one-year pilot. I'm really grateful that you are pushing those boundaries and having these conversations. And I would encourage you to continue to engage the providers. We know what's happening on the ground, and we're going to mention a little further on about the braiding of funding. We can tell you all the nuances to braid funding to get maximum impact. So gaps, not enough rental subsidy, predictable funding cycles over the last couple of years. There's been not enough predictable, particularly at the city, we can predict when the money's going to come out and what the kind of rules to the game are. And that creates uncertainty, and that then backs up the pipeline for housing development. Like if we can't count on a home round every two years, or we can't count on 1590 money to get out the doors in regular cycles, it gets harder to build things. Does that make sense? Okay. The senior wave, I keep chanting the senior wave is coming, and you heard a little bit of that earlier. And I just really know from both our providers on the ground, but we're seeing a lot more folks kind of in this segment that are going to be a bigger problem. And then obviously, a gap in our community's support and empathy and the yes in my backyard. And we, we are pinched in the middle trying to help. Providers are, as are you. So help us with the education and the empathy. And Councilmember Conner, you mentioned, we can do our part, but you all can help kind of champion out in the community and neighborhoods as well. So SPADA has come up a couple of times. We need help navigating a change in the SPADA, I feel. It's a great assessment tool. It's not a prioritization tool, right? That's the disconnect, right? We can tell you about acuity, but not about who goes in what order, so.
Yeah, just, just to say, I'm extremely interested in seeing how we can fix this. I'm very concerned about what we've heard, so I'd love to talk to you more.
Okay, great. It also has some other bias problems as well that we all know about. So CMIS, I think, is a challenge too. It's really hard to get data out, and there's some other challenges there we'd love to talk about. Some more diversion funding, so keeping people from getting into the system, right? That would be helpful. Obviously, we have an economic gap where people aren't making enough to be able to afford housing, much broader than our community, but something that's a gap. And then trying to, again, encourage neighborhoods to be supportive of these efforts. So here's my quick list. So we are championing you guys all the way. Get your city staff back up and fully functioning because it's hard for us to do our job when there's no staff to call and get contracts out. And there's some good progress there, so thank you for that. But we need your team to be strong so we can be strong. Again, work with us to braid funding. So the slick letter that talked about how to leverage different funding sources, work with us. CMIS, here's kind of a Julie throw-in here. So if somebody's getting a multifamily tax exemption, and I'm waiting for lightning to strike me when I say this, you know, wouldn't it be great if there was a certain commitment to 5% of those units being affordable or 10% being affordable, right? And it also, that dispersment, so we're not concentrating poverty, right? Free up surplus land for housing, fund land bank. And I think that is it. I was trying to stick to your script, but.
Julie, Julie?
Yes.
Your first one, get city staff up and stabilized.
Yep.
We'd love to be able to do that, but it's not within our purview. That is an administrative role. If, if it were up to us, yes, it would happen. And we do, we're looking at redoing the MFTE requirements. So, but there's still the, you still can get an MFTE without those. I mean, that's the reality. We want more development, but we would like more. And we absolutely would like it more dispersed so we don't create little mini ghettos, yes.
Yep. We're voting on that on the 15th. And it's, there's, it's, it's better. I was more on your thing of guaranteeing that there was, but I was.
There are a number of.
I wasn't in the majority on that. But it's way better, and it's way more dispersed is, is the thing. So there's a lot, a lot of good to it, just so you know. Councilmember Ringel.
And, and on that, the only one that doesn't come with affordability requirements is the eight-year. And that's because as we're looking at targeted investment areas, the only place where those eight years can go are into the already distressed census tracts. And so the, the 12-year and the longer ones do have 25% and 30% requirements for affordability in the MFTE that'll be coming up to be.
Well, well done. And that makes sense. Thank you.
We'll send it to you.
Councilmember Stratten.
Hi, Julie.
Hi.
Can you spend a couple seconds talking about the assessment that you've been asked to do at Camp Hope?
Hi, Amy. I'm the coordinated entry lead over there at SNAP. I've been working with coordinated entry since 2015. The, we're looking at a different model from a different community because of the talk of the SPADA not being a functional tool for us anymore. It's developed a lot of higher, higher acuity folks, like a lot of people have mentioned. And we're having, we're struggling with placing those higher acuity folks. We do have a lot of higher acuity folks there at Camp Hope. The assessment tool we're looking at in another community, we're just hoping that it will be a model that we, that will better serve our population that are, are scoring in those higher acuity areas. And just shifting so we can maybe house more of the folks. A lot of the folks at Camp Hope, I believe, are some from out of town. And I'd like to address a little bit on the ID thing too. We are addressing that as well. We do have a project ID grant that we just received that we will be addressing that with Camp Hope too. And hopefully, that will relieve some because that has been one of the larger barriers with our homeless population.
And I just wanted to editorialize on the IDs. So the actually processing the ID, I don't think is so much the barrier, but you have to have these underlying documents. And that is where the thing, you have to have the birth certificate, and you can't, the state can't waive that, especially with our new enhanced thing. So that seems to be a challenge, and it takes a while no matter what. But 100% agree that we should focus resources to do that. And we have, just so you know, City Council, well, part of our public safety levy, we have given Community Court $15,000 every year to help them do that. And they've been greatly appreciative of it. But we probably need to give way more money towards that because it's just a huge barrier.
And I, and I do want to just address, there was a pretty healthy debate at our board level about the work at Camp Hope. And we, it is our mission to be there and do the assessments. But we also know that we can't continue to assess people and create frustration when there's no housing. And we don't want to get caught in the bind of making assurances that we can contractually get people rehoused by December or some arbitrary date, right? Like, I don't want to set us up to fail, our community, right? So we're willing to go out and assess and continue to work with people. But again, along that continuum until there's supply, right? It's like assess and do what?
Yeah.
Right? That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah. And changing that tool may, may not address that, right? You know, we're, we're just kind of experimenting with it. We did in February adjust, we spoke with the COC to adjust our 60 and over population. We did talk about a little bit about the, our elderly is, we are a priority, prioritizing those individuals that are 60. Well, we did start at 62 and above, now it's 60 and above. So we're hoping that that has made an impact, and I believe it has.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Well, a couple things. I've got to give a shout out to case managers because all case managers are not created equal in the scope of what their work is. So I just want to acknowledge that to all the case managers who are listening. They do not all do that work. So thank you, and that's different. I guess I'm going to have to challenge, we've had assessments from this population at Camp Hope, and they've all been pretty similar in the data within a few percentage points. So I guess my question is, what are we expecting different from your assessment to go in and come back out? And how will that be used? Because people are tired of being assessed or surveyed and to what ends, like I already told you that before, or I've told five people that and nothing's happened. So I'm just trying to grasp what the expectation is of a different survey that will probably give us similar outcomes.
Yeah, I, I would happen to agree with you on that, on that point. Because I, when I, when we first spoke about doing the assessment for all of Camp Hope, I said, well, just let's continue with the assessment tool that we have. We know it really well, and we can at least prioritize it in the manner that we have been doing it over, you know, many years. Bringing in another tool is going to, of course, I believe, create some more frustration with our, our homeless population. And I am greatly concerned about that myself.
And I would just add, as a member of the board, I remember that discussion, and there was some great concern on SNAP's part about being asked to do that and how that was going to play out and the concerns.
And re-traumatize people, right? And so I would be the first to say, we don't need a contract to assess people. Now, I might get shot here from my colleagues, but, you know, if it's, if it's the work that needs to be done is to meet with people and try to get them housed, okay, let's talk about that. But it's also, where are we housing them, right?
Right.
So that's the question that Councilmember Conner and I ask at every meeting. Where are these people going to go? And nobody has an answer for that. They have lots of ideas, and long as it's not in my backyard, but no answer to where they're going to go. And I think until we keep pushing that question out there and getting a response, we're like dog chasing his tail right now with no really outcomes or deliverables.
But isn't that what the whole Commerce thing is about? That three council members put forward a plan with Commerce to do specifically that?
It is, but we don't have total control over that, Mike, as a council, to where that money goes. And we don't really know what the Commerce is going to do with that money. Because I don't know when the date, what's the date for us to know.
But I get, but here's my, my question for you a little bit on the ground. I don't think the plan is necessarily that everybody has to be reassessed. But my question for you of these assessments that have already taken place, are those, is that data housed? Like, do we have a by name for those people? And because it doesn't seem like we should redo what we've done, but can we assess what we've done and then meet with them to find out what housing option that are coming online through the Commerce dollars would be most appropriate? That sounds like, okay.
And again, is there any diversion option? Can we reunite you? Can we do other things?
But those assessments exist, that data for most, for the most part, exists?
Yes, they live in CMIS. That data does. And now that the SPADA is no longer work code product, we have embedded it into the workflow of CMIS. So yes, it is all embedded in CMIS.
So a case manager-type person could be meeting with Jane Doe, get their information. Yeah, we are, you've already answered these questions. Now let's talk about, we have these five different options out there. Let's try to assess which is the best option for you.
Yes, incorrect. And, and a lot of these folks at Camp Hope have already been, proposed these housing interventions, and, and a lot of them have declined the housing intervention, right? Or they weren't ready, or lots of other scenarios that go along with it. Could be mental health or substance disorder that's causing that barrier for them to move forward.
Okay. I just want to add a side note. So the reason I brought that up is because I think it shows that SNAP, along with a lot of other nonprofits in the community who have stepped up with CARES funding, who have stepped up with helping us get money out the door for rental assistance, all of that, they've worked so hard and tirelessly. And sometimes there's a burden that I don't, unintentionally place on them to say, we need you to do this and this. And sometimes I think it needs to be, we need to stand up with the nonprofit and say, wait a second, how's this going to hap, how's this going to work? What are we going to do with the information? Listen to their expertise and, because I know this has been a really difficult project.
Thank you.
All right, we're.
I was going to say, we added that layer of burden on all of our nonprofits.
Exactly, yeah.
To step up.
Yep.
So thank you both for coming. And for everyone who's stayed this long, thank you for all this. We hope to do this again, not to distant future again. I thought it was helpful. Really appreciate that. We have just one item, super short. I think there's a collective bargaining process ordinance that we circulated. This is the second round of it. We, the first one, we went to City Legal and our labor attorney from Seattle, and they gave some feedback. This is the revised version, and I got the feedback from them generally that there's no real issue with it, except for one thing that's not related to the language. But there are two, two substantive things. And this is based on our experience in the last few weeks. So the first thing is, process-wise, before the administration enters into a tentative agreement with the union, they would need to present to us what was going to be in it. Not that we could control them. They can, they can do whatever TA that they want. That's when they're purview. But they need to get our feedback first so that they have a sense of whether we would prove it or not. So it's just a process piece that they present it to us as opposed to sign the TA and then present it to us. So that's, that's one substantive thing. The second substantive thing is that for police contracts only, before they start the process and come up with their checklist of what the city's goals are, that the OPO and OPOC have a public meeting and get input and give to the administration, these are the civilian oversight issues that are there that can be included. That was the only thing, there was a little heartburn not of doing it. They thought it was a good idea, if I understood it. But they're eager to get going on the next police contract, and so they didn't want to be a delay. So we changed the language from 90 days to 30 days before. And then, even then, I just spoke with the ombudsman's office today, and they can do it in early September, that meeting, which would be before administration plans on starting negotiations. So those are the two things.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I, a lot of this, I certainly agree with, especially the TA. I mean, I think we need a clearer process and a clearer timeline as to when something is affirmatively, tentatively agreed to. So that has to get cleared up regardless. My concern is, I, I just don't think it's fair that we're simply targeting the police on this. And I think it broadly speaking should focus on public safety. And because there are certainly some serious questions related to fire over time and, and things like that, that I think we should also be talking about and reviewing prior to going into negotiations. And I don't see a reason why we wouldn't include just public safety broadly in terms of the things that, that should be reviewed prior to those negotiations.
Can I, may I say something before?
Yeah.
Police are the only ones that would have OPO oversight. That's why he said what he said.
And, and that's related to OPO. My concern is, if we're going to make a special target, there, there are issues with fire that should be considered. And so I, I think we could broaden this to at least fairly address the bigger concerns.
Well, it could be all of it, actually. I mean, I'm just imagining, listening to you, that we could say, before you go in, you need to meet with council, at least an executive session, and find out what council is interested in the next contract. So that, it's a easy, pretty easy.